Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Will you join me with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is our home.
Thank you. I have our name tags, but that's okay because there's so few of us. So I'm Kathy Castren Ellis. I'm chairing the meeting tonight. To my right is our selectman Mark Parento, and next to Mark is selectman Ed Watson. And with us tonight also is our town administrator Rebecca Aldum. And our agenda is not too long, but we do have a public hearing at 6:40 PM that has to occur at 6:40 PM. But I think we could probably go ahead with the approval of the property use permit for Perry Park by the Groveland Congregational Church for parking for their snowflake fair on November 10th and 11th. Is 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM still the correct time, Rebecca? There was several course -- okay. So on Friday, it would be 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and on Saturday it would be 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. So that would be Friday, November 10th, and Saturday, November 11th. And I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the property use permit for Perry Park by the Groveland Congregational Church for the snowflake fair on November 10th and November 11th from 12 to 7:00 PM Friday and 7:30 to 6:00 PM on Saturday.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Okay. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. Next, if it's acceptable, we could probably approve and accept the utility easements at 3 Katy Lane, 6 Katy Lane, and 8 Katy Lane. It would require all three signatures, and they would have to be notarized by our town administrator.
I make a motion we approve and accept the utility easements for 3 Katy Lane, 6 Katy Lane, and 8 Katy Lane.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Reading all of this over, maybe the town administrator has the answer, but what's the timeframe for straightening out King Street when they put in the -- I think it was sewers they put in. That needs to be corrected before winter. It's like going through a minefield.
I'm not sure on the timing, but I can certainly confer with our highway superintendent and the developers and see when that's going to be scheduled.
I did speak with the highway superintendent, and he said it was a water department project, and they were handling that. Maybe you can find out. But that work with the highway superintendent, water department, that needs to be corrected before winter. I'm not even sure they're going to be able to plow that section of King Street.
Okay.
Okay, so that's noted. Is any further discussion on the easements? Okay, and we've had a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Yep.
Is it okay to vote them all together? Yes, okay. So do you want us to sign them now while you're here? We have a few minutes before the hearing. I'm thinking that we have to start the hearing in five minutes or six minutes. Know if the highway superintendent will be here for the hearing?
He will not.
Okay. A second hearing. Hopefully the last one. Okay, we still have five minutes before the hearing, so if we wish to move on to appointments of the board, I have a request for an appointment of DJ McNulty, Merrimack River Road, Groveland, to the Economic Development Committee effective November 7, 2023, through June 30, 2024.
I'll make a motion we appoint DJ McNulty of Merrimack River Road to the Economic Development Committee effective November 7, 2023, through June 30, 2024.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Nope.
There being none, all in favor? It's unanimous. I need a motion for an appointment of Shawn Green of Uptech Road in Groveland to senior labor operator driver in the highway department effective November 13. Correction to what's on your agenda, November 13, 2023. The position is 40 hours per week at a rate of $27.81 per hour.
Make a motion we appoint Shawn Green of Uptech Road to senior labor operator driver in the highway department effective November 13, 2023, for the 40 hours a week at the rate of $27.81 an hour.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
Hello?
All that, and so all in favor?
Yep.
Welcome to Shawn Green.
Welcome back.
Well, that too. Okay. Yes, so we just need to pause for a couple of minutes. Speak amongst yourselves. No, I'm just kidding. Till we reach the correct time for this hearing, and then we can hear from our town accountant right after that. Rebecca, does she know that she's like her -- you know what I mean? What she's saying is it's -- yeah, you know what I'm saying? Thank you. The transcript of whichever she's saying on the phone or something is coming through. Thank you.
Does Zoom close caption?
That's what it is, Zoom closed caption. I've learned not to use closed caption on Zoom for some very real reasons. Words may be misprinted. Not in a good way. I think we've reached the right time, so if everybody's all set, are we good? Yes. All right, so it is whoops, 7:40 PM, I mean 6:40 PM, sorry. And that is the designated time for our public hearing, so pursuant to general law, chapter 40, section 22, provides the Groveland Board of Selectmen with the authority to promulgate parking regulations within the town. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen on November 6, 2023, at 6:40 PM will hold a public hearing to discuss parking restrictions on Sunset Circle. Sunset Circle is an accepted public right-of-way, accepted at annual town meeting on April 29, 2019, as laid out in Plan Book 470, Plan 70, recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deed on April 2, 2019. Such regulations will state, "There shall be no parking on the easterly side of Sunset Circle from the street entrance to the furthest point of the cul-de-sac." Does anybody wish to speak at the public hearing? Okay, by way of explanation, I'll just put in that. This is a second time around on the parking restriction on this, and we have a letter from our highway superintendent, Mr. Rennie Carroll, and he explained to us -- I'm just looking for it. I'll find it in a second. A lot of plans in here tonight. Wait, here it is. No, that's Katy Lane still. Just a sec. Where is this? Is this letter further down past -- I'm down all the way almost to the end. Rebecca, where in our packet was his letter? Is it at the end of our packet? I just wanted to note what he said.
It's the second document.
So, yeah, I really went past it. Hang on. Sorry about that.
So it includes the petition that was signed by the homeowners.
Oh, and the pictures, yes, yes, yes.
With their request as well as the superintendent.
I see, I did go wrong. I really did. We did receive a petition from the residents who did want a parking restriction, and then we received a letter from highway superintendent Rennie Carroll. This letter's purpose is to outline the common knowledge as well as applying the MUTCD guidelines for traffic sign layout. Using the guidelines for the westbound lane or inbound lane, if possible, should remain open to traffic from Salem Street to allow easy and safe transition onto the side streets. Thereafter, having the no parking sign on the westbound side is helpful for vehicle -- vehicular traffic. So are we voting to put on the westbound or the eastbound?
So originally, it was voted to be on the westerly side.
Correct.
And then the superintendent had advocated that it be placed on the easterly side.
Correct.
And so we're looking to correct that properly per procedure.
Okay, so that's the whole point of this hearing, is to keep that inbound lane open with no parking restrictions. And the residents had asked to have those signs angled, and I believe the superintendent agreed with that request. So I don't -- I'm not aware of any other issues. This could be just voted again. If you want to wake the motion for the easterly side, as stated in our agenda, the motion would state -- I'll make it. I'll make a motion, "There will be no parking on the easterly side of Sunset Circle from the street entrance to the furthest point of the cul-de-sac."
Did you make that motion?
I just did.
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, any more discussion on Sunset Circle?
No.
No, there being none, I'll call for the vote.
Nobody's here and...
Nobody's here.
They'll get their signs and get this done.
Okay. All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. We've now switched the sides to where the signs are. This is good. Okay. So that's done. Do we need to sign anything with respect to that?
No, what will end up happening is I will take the language. I will rewrite the notice and submit to the Eagle Tribune. Once it runs in the Eagle Tribune, that will satisfy the notice requirements of the Massachusetts General Law and will be enforceable.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, so next on our agenda is our year-end review from our town accountant, Ellen Petrillo. You could actually join us up at the table. I mean, we have like all these extra seats. I know, fear of cameras, but come on up. So Ellen provided us with her end-of-year reports, and I'm going to just turn over this to you, if that's all right, for your end-of-year reporting.
Technical delay.
Oh, here we are. So we did really well. We continued to maintain a 98%, 99% collection rate, which we've done for many years now.
Oh, the transcript is on. Are you going to leave that on? That -- because sometimes it misspells, it says a word different than what you said.
Sure, someone requested it.
Oh, because as a teacher who's done Zoom, let me just say that sometimes -- I'm just saying that sometimes the words you say aren't the words they print. There you go. Go ahead.
So of the budgeted tax dollars, we brought in -- it was 18.3. We brought in 18.1. If you remove -- we had about $79,000 in abatements and exemptions, so that leaves about 136. And then if you look at tax title collections, we brought in 151, so that's kind of nice to see. Even though tax title comes from previous levy years, we did kind of bring in all the taxes that we wanted to this year. Local receipts, we did really well. It was mainly due to this miscellaneous nonrecurring revenue, which is from an HVAC energy rebate from when we redid all the HVAC. That was about $67,000. And then we sold some town vehicles for $28,000. The state generally comes in about where it's supposed to. I just have an asterisk, that other state number includes opioid settlements, which will fall to free cash, and we have to vote to apportion them to what is allowed to be used for opioid settlements. So we have to remember to not include that in our free cash, available free cash. But as you can see, we came in about $96,000 over budget, which is due to the HVAC and the vehicles. I'll go to the summary. It's easier to read. And then these were our town meeting appropriated expenses, and as you can see, we came in way under, which was excellent. Rebecca and all the departments did really well managing their budgets. And I believe about $317,000 of that fell to free cash. You have to remove any continued appropriations or encumbrances, which amounts to about 317. That 3,000 is just our allowance for abatements and exemptions. We budgeted 125. It came in at like 122. So that's where we ended for the year. As you know, you guys voted in a finance policy, which had numerous financial indicators, so it's exciting to see those this year. The collection rates are not part of that. I just put it on there and put 98, 99 as the goal, because that's what we have done in previous years. The next section, capital financing and town debt limits, it all relates to debt. Capital is debt compared to debt service compared to total budgeted expenditures, operating net of debt. So I did it in three different ways, because we had the new school, which is obviously going to skew it, because it's brand-new debt and it's very large debt. So I did a town -- the town as a whole is 14%, and just keep in mind, these are goals. We just started this. We knew we weren't going to be exactly meeting the goals. It's what we're trying to -- we're trying to use these in future budgeting and forecasting to get to these goals, to get the town in an even better financial position. So town and debt together, we're at about 14%, and the goal's like three to five. This is actually not too bad. Again, if you look, the school only is 22, and the town is three, so the town alone is within it. You do have to include the school. It is money that we owe. But it is going to skew it, because it's new, it's 30-year, and it was a multimillion-dollar Debt service, this is -- you're looking at debt compared to revenues in this one, so you want your debt service, which is your expenditures on debt, to be between 5% and 7%, with a limit at 10. Again, the brand-new, high-dollar school debt is going to skew this, and 12 really isn't bad to be over the limit. And then percent of outstanding debt, so they're saying all of our outstanding debt, at least 50% of it should be paid off, that's the goal, in 10 years. So we're at 36. Again, we just got the school debt, so that's a 30-year bond, so obviously, that's going to bring this down a little, but the fact that it is pretty close to 50% is pretty And then the town's debt, total debt, this is actually set by DOR, so they really wouldn't let us go over 5%. So we're doing great. If you reach 5%, you're really maxed out your town, so we're fine there. Next, in the indicators, is our financial reserves, so that would be things like stabilization. So free cash is the percent of your annual general fund budget. You want to hold on to 3% to 5% of it. Once we get some of the other indicators and really look at our forecasts and budget and can devise a -- it's usually about a five-to-10-year plan. That will come up, but we're not in a position right now to leave behind that percentage of free cash, because it would be spending none of it, and we're not able to do that. Stabilization as a percent of the operating budget for FY '23 was 7%, and the goal is 5, so we're doing great there. Capital stabilization is just shy of 2, and the goal is 2 to 4. I think we have historically put a little bit more in stabilization compared to capital, which you want your stabilization to be a little higher, so we can just look at -- I think we've been trying to do like 50/50, so maybe we can like, you know, we can talk about looking at maybe doing like 75/25 for a couple of years or something to get that ratio a little better, but that's certainly doable. We did not contribute -- we have a goal of contributing to capital 100K or 1% of operating revenue. We did not contribute any. I think we just put it all in stabilization in FY '23, so -- but this year, and I know we're planning on next year putting more in, we are not in a position to probably do 100K or 1% at this point. Again, that will get better when we can get the plan and get the free cash a little bit higher, so that will probably happen over the next probably three to five years. The minimum balance, so this looks at how much capital stabilization you want to achieve compared to the amount of your total asset depreciation. So our current depreciation is 1.1, and our current capitalization is 350. So again, a little work to do there. That's a good number to meet. That will take a little bit longer than some of the other ratios, but we can certainly devise a plan to get there.
Can you ask a question on that?
Sure.
To make sure I understand it, Sue, is that 1.1 million the actual depreciation on all of our capital?
Yes, that's our expenditure.
So we want to have that much in our capital stabilization so that we can replace things?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So you have it in situations where, you know, you don't want to -- you again, look at your debt ratios. We don't want them to go much higher, so do we have -- if we have 1.1 in capital, then we can contribute that instead of going for more bonds.
Okay. Instead of borrowing?
Yes, so that's why you want it to be so high.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment about the capital statement?
Sure.
That I think last year for the budget, we made a point to not put as many funds into capital stabilization since we had such substantial ARPA funds. So we thought, since we had to take out of our regular stabilization to backfill our education payment the year before, we thought we'll pay back the stabilization, the regular stabilization, put a pause on the capital because we had so many ARPA funds, and we reallocated it that way. So I think that might look a little bit less, but I think we do have the ongoing effort to contribute to capital.
Definitely. Thank you for saying that, because I knew there was a reason why, but wasn't entirely sure what that was. And then it has a section on water and sewer. They get certified retained earnings, just like we get free cash, and they're supposed to stay within -- their goal is to be at least 20% of their total budget, and they are meeting those goals. I know that they're trying -- they have some smaller water main replacements that they're trying not to use debt for, so I believe Colin said they're trying to build that number to take care of those products, projects, excuse me. And then the general fund as reserves as a percent of annual operating, so your reserves are your capital stabilization, your stabilization, your free cash, available money to spend on things other than your operating budget. You want it to be between 10% and 14%. Ours is 10, which is great. Because it was a -- as a percent of annual operating, I did do another calculation, not including capital stabilization, because that's more, you know, things that you might go for debt for, or larger projects that aren't in your operating budget, and that did bring it to like 9.19%, which goes right along with where we are, higher up, and bringing these numbers a little higher. And then we just have in our finance policy to commit to funding the OPAB 85,000 a year, and we have been doing that annually. So that's about it, unless anybody has any questions.
It's a lot of information.
But again, just remember their goals. This is And they're supposed to stay within, their goal is to be at least 25, 20% of their total budget. And they are meeting those goals. I know that they're trying, they have some smaller water main replacements that they're trying not to use debt for. So I believe Colin said they're trying to build that number to take care of those products, projects, excuse me. And then the general fund as reserves as a percent of annual operating. So your reserves are your capital stabilization, your stabilization, your free cash, available money to spend on things other than your operating budget. You want it to be between 10 and 14%. Ours is 10, which is great. Because it was a, as a percent of annual operating, I did do another calculation not including capital stabilization because that's more, you know, things that you might go for debt for or larger projects that aren't in your operating budget. And that did bring it to like 9.19%, which goes right along with where we are higher up and bringing these numbers a little higher. And then we just have in our finance policy to commit to funding the OPAB 85,000 a year and we have been doing that annually. So that's about it unless anybody has any questions.
It's a lot of information.
But again, just remember their, their goals. This is a new policy. We set this policy so we could set some 5 to 10-year plans. We're currently working on a 5-year forecast that is going to involve these indicators and also relate to our upcoming budget and the upcoming capital plan, as well as any bonding that we may or may not want to do.
Do you have a question at this point? I do have a question. So if I'm understanding it correctly, part of what we're trying to move towards is generating more free cash every year?
Correct.
In proportion to our budget as your percentage goal. So, and the free cash comes from departments not overspending. So basically somehow not spending all the money they're given, right? Or we collect additional revenue beyond that which we forecasted. So it's a two-pronged thing.
Correct. And from leaving free cash behind. So that's where one of the indicators. So anything you don't spend in free cash, we just got certified for 440, 400. So if we, you know, only spent 200, 200 of that would roll into next year's certification. So that's why that indicator is saying to leave behind. Now, I of course can't find it.
So you, okay, so we've been, I thought we'd been moving it all to stabilization or capital stabilization? No, we have been leaving behind?
We try to leave a little behind, yeah.
Try to leave, okay. And so for the departments that, you know, obviously did so well and didn't have to spend all that money, do you look at that as they didn't need it or that they just did really well that year and let them build their budget?
It really depends. You know, I don't want to point out any single department, but I know police has a legal requirement that Mass is no longer going to let them use reserve officers. So they have to slowly move those out. So that is a very difficult thing to budget for and it's definitely not something you want to be under-budget for. So I think he did a fabulous job budgeting that and then he did a fabulous job managing it. So he had a decent amount, not he, police had a decent amount left over. And then just, you know, staff turnover can create that. And, and I do think our departments worked really hard to keep that, you know, they only spend what they need.
That's good, that's really good to hear. And I think that's good for everybody in town to hear that that part of what they're seeing here is positive movement on all of our reserves and all of our things. And it's contributed by departments really, really looking at their spending and managing it. And hopefully we'll move away from the days when I think departments felt like if they didn't spend it all, next year we'd cut them backwards. We're not, we're not in that mode. Now we have a financial planning team who's guiding us through the process, which helps. I think it's going to help the process a lot as far as that kind of thought process that if I don't spend it, next year they'll just take it, they'll cut me down by that amount. So we.
I know we've, you know, tried to spread the word about that and I think the boards have as well let people know that that's not how they necessarily look at things. Obviously, if you have a line that comes in hundreds of thousands of dollars under every year, then yes, we would look at that again.
Of course.
But if it's, you know, a few thousand dollars here and there, it's always a situation and you're probably going to need it next year.
Right. But your sense is the departments really do try to hold the line on their spending and that even in an inflationary environment that we're in, they're working even harder.
Absolutely.
And that's reflected in our, in our financial indicators. Thank you. Do we have any more questions for Ellen? We can let her actually go home at the end of a long day. I really appreciate that you stayed to come in and talk to us.
Thank you for having me. Happy to do it.
And this, this kind of information is, is brand-new to us as a board. We're not used to seeing all these percentages and hearing that we're doing all right, which usually we're going the other way.
We're doing all right and we're going to improve.
Yeah. Can I just compliment the finance team and the town administrator? I think that, you know, they worked really hard. I, I'm Ruth Rivard. I live at Sixberrywood Lane and I sit on the finance committee and I have for about eight years now. And so I'm just really excited that we have these policies put into place. I love to see how we're, you know, managing the budget to meet those policies. I think that having the policies really help us to make decisions with the budget. But I think really the reason that we're seeing the free cash that we saw this year is because there are now checks and balances in place that we haven't always had. And I know that the finance team now is really approving expenditures. I think that, you know, the, the legal budget, for example, that's being managed well. And this is what happens when we hired a town administrator. We have a town accountant that's really paying attention to all these details. And every single decision matters and they add up. And I think that this just turned into a great year. So congratulations and we really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
Just nice job.
Nice job. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, I think, is our regional agreement up next? Yes, that's what I thought so. Okay, so that's a kind of a big task. So I believe we have a paper copy of this.
So at the meeting that we had back in September, on September 11th, Selectwoman Kastenalis had come forward with some of her analysis of the regional agreement and some questions that she had had. So the board had asked me to go through and take a look at what was being proposed from West Newbury, what was being proposed in Merrimack, and then also take a closer look at what Selectwoman Kastenalis had asked in terms of her questions and some of the concerns that she had brought forward. So I provided with you a memo this evening that kind of goes through the arguments for the changes that we have discussed. I think a lot of them are pretty straightforward. I think it gets a little bit more technical when we get into some of the questions that Kathy had brought forward, specifically in terms of enrollment in the calculation, in the way that the assessment is calculated. So I think that the bigger of the items that are being discussed from both West Newbury and Merrimack are, as it lays out in the first page, the first one being that they want to increase the capital threshold from 10,000 to 20,000. That seems very much in line with everything that we would recommend from a town perspective as well. It matches our capital thresholds that we had just increased. And in today's world, the cost of projects have substantially increased. So it's just more in line with what would be required to get proper approval in order to move forward with actually addressing those types of situations. The second one is in regards to removing the shall requirement for a town to have their own elementary school. I know that there had been questions by Merrimack and I believe it was a conversation that also happened with West Newbury about what that really meant and whether or not that would mean that we would eliminate a school. In, in my opinion, in reading what was proposed, I think it was just really kind of offering a possibility to consolidate at one point in time if that's the direction that the region wanted to go. My bigger concern was more so that it would require the proper approval from the communities and more specifically that all three communities would agree that any type of consolidation of any elementary school, if that's what it came down to, was something that everybody was in favor of, not just two of those communities benefiting where the other ones kind of, you know, not getting the same deal, whether or not a new elementary school is built or what have you. So that was more so my concern as opposed to whether or not it would eliminate a elementary school. And I don't believe that really kind of was the intent of the proposed language change. I think it was more, again, the possibility. So I'm not sure if at the meeting tomorrow with the school committee and the other tri-towns, we want to ask more questions about that and kind of refine that language. But I believe that was something that both West Newbury and Merrimack had brought concerns about. The final one was in relation to the advisory committee in the, I don't know, clarification of what the advisory committee had taken shape as. I actually had talked to Selectwoman Kastenalis and she had mentioned looking at one of the regional agreements in prior years. So I was taking a closer look at that and it looks like this has been something that had been discussed in prior years as well. So this kind of, just kind of identifies what that group would look like in the structure. I don't really see any negative to kind of formalizing that. But if that's something the board would like to do or discuss further, they're certainly within their purview to do so. And then I started to get into the questions that Kathy had brought forward, specifically in terms of enrollment and making sure that the calculation had preschool and they were self-supporting basis for the enrollment numbers. And I had talked with PRSD and we had talked about the fact that they are required to include all of the pre-K, excuse me, preschool in their enrollment numbers. However, there's the special education side of things, which will reimbursements and covers and added support from the state side of things. But those who are paying tuition, those go to cover the cost of the preschool budget. So those costs do not go to the town. So they confirmed that it would be self-supporting as outlined in the regional agreement. And the other question was in regards to the enrollment formula and making sure that it was being used as DESI, the Department of Elementary Secondary Education, I think it's.
Yeah, Department, yeah.
And how they had defined it. And so I went through and took a closer look. And as Selectwoman Kastenalis had pointed out, there is room for improvement in terms of clearly identifying those students that are included in the actual calculation and the assessment and those that are not. For example, when we pay Whittier, when we pay Essex Tech for those students, we're paying for those students specifically. So those numbers shouldn't be counted towards our assessment because if they are, then we're essentially paying twice for students. If you're in a private school, parochial school, things of that nature, those would not necessarily go towards our actual paying assessment. However, the way that the law is written, if you're in a charter school, those actually do get counted towards our assessment. So those are things that we could get clarified. And I did talk to the new business manager and she said that that wouldn't be a problem to separate those out and more clearly define those enrollment figures so that they can be clearly identified. The only thing about that that I will say is that when Selectwoman Kastenalis had mentioned the formula, I had taken a look at both the Triton Regional Agreement and another regional agreement in the surrounding area. And they actually do list out the actual assessment calculation and the step that it goes through for the calculating that assessment. So that might be something that we want to consider. And that is something that I included as part of your packet to see exactly what, you know, that language looks like for another regional school and see if that's something that we would like to propose at the meeting tomorrow to more clearly identify how we are coming up with that number. The other item was in regards to the decimal places and what was being used. So the former business manager had used five decimal places to round to one. But it doesn't, it's not really going to impact the budget all too much. But like Selectwoman Kastenalis said, and I definitely agree, it should match the regional agreement. So whether it says it in the regional agreement or what's the common practice, they should just match. So whatever it is, they should just make sure it's the same. And the last was in regards to the emergency repair procedures. So I don't know, Kathy, if you want to speak more to this, but I tried to kind of understand exactly where you were coming from with your concerns in relation to that. So I listed out what the lease currently says for the Bagnell Elementary School and what the procedures are for going about the, for emergency repairs. And then I also cited what was stated in the agreement as to how we go about emergency repairs. And it essentially, my understanding is that if we were to increase the capital cost, we would then be responsible for anything that's $20,000 and over, whether emergency or otherwise. And the same as it is now, right now, if it's $10,000 or over, it's at the expense of the town. If it's under, it's at the expense of the district. And most of the time, the district will take care of all of the maintenance costs with the day-to-day type of activities. So I believe that that would stay in effect and it would just be increased based upon the capital expenditure threshold as it's recommended in the agreement to match the lease. But I'm not sure if that's really kind of, I was a little confused as to what we were trying to.
I know, and I've been thinking about it. I think the one, the one incident that comes to mind is the one winter where the pile, the snow piled up on the roof of Bagnell and they let it pile up till it got to the point where the weight per square foot caused an emergency, I guess. I mean, that's my understanding. And then I think the town was told they had to clear it. I think the fire department went up there and shoveled it and snow, used snow blowers and might have chewed up the roof a bit. But the point was that nothing was done until it piled way up. And then, and all the schools around us were kind of doing the same thing. Like nobody thought ahead that this was going to become an emergency, but it was. And then the town had to. But now you're saying that if it's 20,000 or over, then we would. So something like this would fall under maintenance?
I believe that's how I interpret right now with, with the way that the regional agreement is today, that it would just be based upon the capital threshold. But even then, so I don't know what the procedures were in prior years. I know that they just created a new position, I forget the actual title, but he manages all of the facilities for the school. And it makes it really easy for us because we meet monthly now. So he'll meet monthly with myself or he'll meet monthly with, with Carol and Merrimack and Angus and West Newbury and go through exactly what the elementary schools need, if there's something that's been happening or if there's a concern or a capital project that just came up because something had happened. So that type of constant dialogue and that communication really kind of changes the way that we, we address what you define as emergency because we're being more proactive. And because we have that constant dialogue, there's nothing prohibiting anybody to pick up the phone and say, hey, did you see the weather forecast? Like, do you know what's going to happen? Do you know what plan is in place? You know, can you have your highway guys come up and help out for this because we're going to be over here? You know, I think that that type of, of communication kind of changes the dynamic. But it doesn't, again, preclude you from adding any additional, you know, leverage in the agreement if it's so warranted and allowable under, you know, the DESI commissioner's review.
Right. Well, I think, I think your document does a phenomenal job encapsulating my random concerns which are kind of all over the place. But then when I looked at the, is that a proposed new regional agreement that's in our packet?
So the one that's listed from West Newbury is the one that's kind of the, the main document we've been focusing on for, for changes because it encapsulates what we had originally discussed when we had that meeting back in, I believe it was August of 2022, where it was like three of the Board of Selectmen members, three of the finance board members, and then the tri-towns all came together and we kind of picked apart the agreement and voiced some of our concerns. And then that effort kind of stopped because budgetary concerns grew with both Merrimack and Groveland and an override was necessary and we kind of switched gears a little bit. And then we met again in July 2023 and the communities kind of went in their own direction. But West Newbury really, you know, cleared the path as to like, these are still the main concerns and these are the things that had been brought to our attention based on those meetings back in 2022. So the proposed changes are really kind of what West Newbury had taken from those meetings and had discussed internally. And as you saw in your packets, Merrimack concurred essentially with everything that was stated except ask questions about that one particular section with the shall and whether or not we would eliminate any elementary schools. And then now Groveland is taking a closer look, more specifically at other areas of, of language as you had done with the enrollments and with the emergency repairs, et cetera. So that proposed agreement is really kind of like the outline that was kind of initiated in that working group.
Right. So the proposal is to create, again, I think, Ed, you might remember, the, the regional advisory committee from way back when. I think it's one member of a finance board, one member from the Board of Selectmen, the chair of the school committee, and then the town manager or town administrator from each town. It says finance director or such other, I think they could put a better name on the position. But that committee would try to meet from time to time or does that have a schedule?
So the way I read it is that the financial advisory committee, like you said, member of the town select board, the finance director or the manager, and then a finance committee member, and then regional district school committee chair or designee and the district superintendent and the business manager. And they would meet from time to time and specifically in the recommended changes, it would say that they would meet two times a year during budget process. So an initial meeting in late January. a year during budget process. So an initial meeting in late January and an additional meeting in March prior to the School Committee's vote on the proposed budget. So, I mean, I'm not sure if the Board would like to be more specific in terms of what's, you know, what, when the Advisory Committee is meeting. I do know that, like we had mentioned, it might not necessarily be necessary to meet as often since both, you know, myself, Angus and Carol meet with the Superintendent and the Business Manager monthly. But I definitely think it's worthwhile making sure that we solidify that there are those two times of years, whether, two times a year, whether it be in the November, December timeframe or February timeframe prior to the budget being released, that they make sure that they're communicating with us about what their plans are and what they're putting forward.
So would this Advisory Committee take the place of these open forums that we're going to? Is this something you, you would want us to support? I mean, maybe you'd want to think about it, wait for the full Board to be here? It's just something to think about. You know, what is the purpose of the Advisory Committee? I mean, we know we have our Town Administrator monthly. This would be in addition to that. So it's something to think about. And then the other thing I thought that was important was the, on the last page of her memo, she talks about the five-year capital plan. I think this is a big deal because we used to just get a page at the back end of the budget that would tell us everything in Bagnell that needed to be fixed, that we couldn't afford it all at once anyway. But it would just be this list, right? So this would be a five-year plan, but it's going to be for both the secondary and the elementary schools together, correct?
I'm not sure. I know that in the proposal, we had asked for the capital budget to be communicated with us prior to January 15th because originally the agreement said January 15th. And like you said, it's way too late for us to really plan any of our capital expenditures when you're, you're in January. So we asked them to get us, get us updated projects and cost estimates each year by October. I don't believe I saw anything specific to the middle high school and all school capital-related needs, but I think we were more so focused on the elementary schools. But at the same time, as you're saying, it would be well worth it to know what's coming down the pipeline because those capital expenditures, regardless, will come in our direction at the percentage of our assessment. So I think that would be worthwhile to clarify and/or make sure that it's concluded.
Right. So that you, the Town Administrators and the Town Managers, you've asked for the October 15th date?
Yes, we asked for the.
What do you think of that date?
As long as it's enough time, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then it's not here, but I think I saw it in the draft. There's going to be a maintenance budget for our elementary school? Is there going to be like a, you know how everything now up to 20,000, they're responsible for? That'll be in the regular budget. We'll see that.
So the lease reflects the regional agreement? So it doesn't give a monetary association with the lease we have for the Bagnell School?
I'm talking about the new regional agreement. It's going to have, supposedly have this section on the capital, right? So that's everything 20,000 and above, right?
So it, it looks to increase the capital threshold from the 10,000 to the 20,000?
But is there another section for the under? Like how, what are they spending capital-wise under there for maintenance?
I, I don't believe there's a breakout of their plans and/or what they're looking to do with those funds or how they're looking to
Okay.
address those situations.
And it's still, they still want to maintain the policy that all of their E and D is put in stabilization? That's their voted policy?
So the School Committee's voted policy?
Yes.
Yes. So I, I, as you had mentioned that earlier this evening, I did not look into the, the comment. I wasn't aware that there was a concern with the E and D and, and the policy that was in place.
Well, my concern is that I, when I saw the E and D and the revenue, I thought, okay, good. They're using the E and D as revenue. And then it was kind of, I think most people in town and myself included did not realize until we started to struggle with the budget that buried deep in the budget was a line item moving the entire amount, that year was like 1.6 million, into stabilization. It's a pretty hefty amount when we're trying to afford the budget.
No, I, I would agree. I know that we had talked previously. I think that, like we're trying to do and like you'll see with our capital plan and with our upcoming budget. And as we just discussed with the Town Accountant, we historically try to hit certain targets to put monies away for capital stabilization and stabilization. Being a small community with limited means, it makes it very challenging to make sure that those reserves are built up enough so that they can be beneficial to us in a time of need. That being said, I mean, we tend to take whatever we have for free cash and put about $50,000 in both of those accounts. And then we try and utilize as much of the free cash as we can in order to get many of our capital projects completed without going out for debt. I think that the school tries to make the same types of, of decisions when they're trying to say, hey, we need solar, or hey, we need this. And if we have these monies here, then we don't necessarily have to go back to the taxpayers and ask for additional money. But if there's a concern about how much is being put aside, then it's definitely worthwhile talking more in detail with the School Committee. But I do think that there is some validity in terms of financial management to want to take some of that remaining fund and put it away so that you don't have to go back to the taxpayers or the residents to ask for more money.
And you're recommending something more like the Triton Regional Agreement for clarifying the process followed to determine the assessment?
You had mentioned that you would like to see some type of, of detail. And that was just a level of detail that I found that might be beneficial in terms of what you were looking for and give you a little bit more of an understanding of how that, that formula is derived and what it looks like.
I'm just looking at what's in our thing, the Section 12 on the budget. And say, and somebody's crossed off some lines. I imagine that's the group that does these cross-offs.
So that's the proposed amendments that came from Wes Newberry that originated with that first working group?
Okay. Because it does say the region, it says the Advisory Committee will meet from time to time to discuss matters that may impact the district and/or the towns, including budget calendars, timelines, content and detail of budgets, revenue estimates, and other revenue matters, capital budget items, and use of excess and deficiency funds. And that's what kind of caught my eye, that use of excess being done within an Advisory Committee. I mean.
And that was part of the original. That's, that's not new.
Excess, oh, from, okay, from the old agreement. This was taken out, yes.
This is, this was part of the, if it's double, if it's a strike through, it's being removed. If it's a double underline, it's being added. And if it has no, no markings, then it's what originally stands in the agreement.
Right. But we haven't had a regional advisory. So the E and D has been handled just by the School Committee?
Yes.
So this could be good? That the E and D will be more openly discussed? What do you think? They tend to certify, what, about a million dollars every year or more? Do we know, what did they certify this year?
Um, I, I did get notice. I'm not sure. I can, I can pull it up.
I don't remember. Yeah.
But their E and D is exactly what our free cash is. And for our free cash, we only certified $460,000. So a million dollars would be a lot nicer of a number to receive.
And then it, this is, if it's double underline, that's in addition to the agreement? The double underline?
The double is an, an addition. And for the PennTucket excess and deficiency for two, I only have the latest one was for 2022 in November.
Oh, okay. Well.
And it was a million dollars.
Yeah, they did about that. So it sounds like the budget process is initiated annually in December. And that part's kind of staying the same until, it says the Advisory, the Advisory Committee shall convene two meetings during the budget process, including an initial meeting in late January and an additional meeting in March prior to the School Committee's vote on the proposed budget. Additionally, upon request of the Finance Committee and/or Select Board of any town, the Regional District School Committee shall arrange to meet with such Finance Committee and/or Select Board for the purposes of proposing the budget. That's all new. It's double underline. That would be new?
Mm-hmm.
So they're providing more opportunity for us to weigh in. And they're willing to come to our meetings. It's not a bad thing. Instead of us having to go there all the time. That seems good. But they struck out upon request of the Finance Committee and/or Board of Selectmen of any member town? Oh, because it's redundant? Is that why that's being struck? Because it's already covered in the, they took out that we can ask to meet with them?
I think it's also somewhat common practice. I know that they had said in prior years that, that we had stopped inviting them. I'm not sure if that's the case. I was not here. But I do think that we can make time to invite them to come to Groveland as they do for both Merrimack and Wes Newberry. I don't think the regional agreement needs to state such, but it can if you'd like it to as well.
Okay. Well, these are the changes that are going to be discussed tomorrow night, right?
My understanding.
With the memo that you've proposed, what do you want from us with your?
Just a better understanding of what you would like to move forward with. I mean, would you like to explore, you know, the language? Do you want to make comments about the language for the shall and the consolidation of an elementary school? Do you want to propose that we put forward the calculation in the agreement similar to what Triton has done? Do we want to make commentary about the emergency repairs and, and ensuring that that process is listed out? I mean, it still has to go through Town Council and it still has to get approval from the DESI Commissioner. Without their approval, it doesn't go in there because it's not legal. And then it has to go to town meeting for official vote and approval. So there are still some steps we need to go through. But if there's something that you'd like included or something you'd like taken out, or you disagree with something, now would be the time to kind of, you know, bring up those concerns. And I can redraft a memo tomorrow and make sure that that gets into the hands of the, the School Committee as well as the tri-town representatives to make sure that they're aware of where the Board of Selectmen stands on these issues.
Ed, what do you, what do you think of the three main proposed changes that Rebecca proposed in her memo that she said? The sections dealing with increasing the capital threshold from 10 to 20,000. So the district, so the town would, would be responsible for things over 20,000. District will be responsible for things under. Second one, removing the shall. I mean, to me, to us, we have one elementary school. So it doesn't, it doesn't seem to impact us at all, really, does it? It reads now, there shall be not less than one or more elementary school in each member town. And they want to change it to, there may be one or more elementary school in each member town. Does that matter to you?
No.
Listen, I, I don't.
We only got one anyway.
We only got one anyway. Okay. So I guess we don't see what the issue is there. And Section 12 of the budget, the clarification of an Advisory Committee. Do we feel like let them roll that forward? What do you think?
Yeah. I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
Makes sense to me.
So those three, do you want us to vote or is consensus good or?
I think the consensus is fine. When we have the discussion tomorrow, we can say that they're in agreement, that they, those changes would, would satisfy the Board.
Great. Yeah. So, so, and just to explain what my issue was on the enrollment was that they had a section at the top and included, it said it included the students from, that we send to Essex Tech. And we already pay for those.
Right.
So I couldn't tell if they were in the number being added to our enrollment or not because it was just like a group. So I asked them to separate that so that we know for sure because we shouldn't have to pay twice for the same students. We already pay an assessment. And that made sense. The only other thing is the preschool, we have not adopted like free preschool yet. So unless it's a special education where they're reimbursed for it, we don't pay for the preschoolers. That's, you pay tuition. But we do, we think we're funding full-day kindergarten?
I believe so, yes.
I think we're funding full-day kindergarten right now. And unfortunately, I don't think the state reimburses on Chapter 70 for kindergarten as a full day. It'd be nice if they would. Because I think a lot of schools have all-day kindergarten. Is there anything else that you wanted to, there's a lot here. I'm, I'm going to try and go to the meeting tomorrow. I don't know if any, either of you are going to try to go or?
I'm not sure I'm going to be around.
Okay. Well, we'll bring back information from, it's, there's a lot of changes. I think it'll take another meeting or so. And if we want them, PennTucket to come in here and you have questions for them about the regional agreement, we could push that forward to another agenda. I feel like Rebecca's done a really good job investigating and straightening out a lot of the confusion that I had with everything. And I appreciate that because I think if things are clarified, we all know what we're looking at, then we can judge it more accurately. And if we're not quite sure where the numbers are coming from. So have we completed this agenda item, do you think? Okay. All right. So that's, that's a done deal. We're done with that. We'll move on. We don't have any minutes. We've done our appointments. Do you want to do your Town Administrator time?
Sure.
Okay.
So for warrant, 2471 payroll warrant, we have $192,458. And for the bill warrant, we have $428,129. I also wanted to just share three updates with the Board. One, the town received a MVP grant for $143,666. This was to improve resiliency in the Johnsons Creek watershed, watershed by designing a new culvert at Lower Santa Street and designing a construction bio-retention area to capture runoff from the town-owned parking lot over at Washington Park. So we've been working with our engineer and our consultants to get those activities underway. They performed an engineering site survey at the proposed culvert improvements location, and they began performing engineering analysis to determine required culvert sizing. We are looking to have borings done in that particular area. So we are meeting with appropriate personnel to figure out whether or not we'll be able to do that. And if we are, if we need to close down the roadway. So if we do need to do a detour of some sort, we will be communicating such and making sure proper arrangements are made. So I just wanted to make sure that the Board is fully aware of the activity that's happening in that particular area in town. And then also, I just wanted to let you know that I'm continuing to work on the capital plan. Things have been going a little bit slower than I had hoped, but we are making headway. And hopefully I'll have that for you at the next meeting. And that also, at the next meeting, we will have the liquor licenses and auto licenses and common vic licenses that will need approval on. And then we will also need to have our tax classification hearing. So that's something that we will be scheduling as well. So we will have a little bit more of a packed agenda on November 20. And then lastly, just to let you know that I did hear, I have not received official confirmation, but the Whittier School is no longer going to be holding their public engagement sessions. So the engagement session that was originally scheduled for November 18th, I guess, is no longer going to be happening. So I'm going to try and get confirmation on that. I hear that their meetings have been quite contentious in a couple of different communities. And therefore, they felt as though they, they no longer wanted to participate in those types of conversations. Again, that's just my assumption and based upon what I'm hearing from other communities. But I will update the website and other social media to alert residents that we will not be having the meeting on November 18th with the Whittier School District. And they do plan on moving forward with their district-wide vote on January 27th from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Can you just repeat? What was the thing for Washington Park?
So there's the parking lot, and then there's like the, the wetland area that's over to the left. left-hand side, if you're looking over there. So, we're looking to create a more designated bio-retention area to capture the runoff on the parking lot.
See, had we done the job legally the first time, probably wouldn't be doing that right now, huh?
Done what? You mean the parking lot? We didn't do it?
And the town has to go and pay to have it fresh?
Yep.
Again, this is part of a grant. I mean, I understand that all money's taxpayer dollars, but it's not necessarily directly something that the town had to pay for. So, that is a good thing, I guess, for silver lining.
Yep, all right.
So, we have problems with the runoff from the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Too big. It's supposed to have drainage, anything over 20,000 square feet.
Okay, is that everything for?
Yes.
Okay, so now it's Selectmen's time and reports, Ed?
Yes. I'm glad you brought up about Woodya. We'll be looking at it in correspondence, a letter from Rowley, and they make sense. And just reading part of what they say, "This is not the right time of year to hold an election in January. The voting hour is 11:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night." I think we need to put this on the agenda and talk about this. And like Rowley alludes to the fact that voters going to the poll in Rowley will not understand that a yes vote in this district-wide election means that this project moves forward without a plan for the town to pay for its share of the project. You can echo that for Groveland also. And then, then they mention, "Without a debt exclusion, passage of this ballot question will certainly result in budget restrictions with cuts to town services to cover the cost of the town's share of the project." I think we need to put it on the agenda, let the townspeople know what's happening and why. See if we can get some answers on, why are they holding it in January, one of the snowiest months of the year, and the only, the election is from 11:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night? Ludicrous. It should be just like any other election, from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. You've got people that are working during the day, they may not be able to make it between the 7 and, 11 and 7. And I don't know how the law is on that, but it just seems like it doesn't make any sense. And in January, probably one of the snowiest months of the year, where was it, January, January 23rd? It doesn't make any sense.
I'd like to get it on the agenda. I know that there's a conflict with the vice chair, so I was waiting for Chairman McDonald's or-
Fine, but there's four other members. And I think we need to get it on the agenda, and I think we need to get it out to the townspeople. The problem, if this passes, we're looking at a debt exclusion, or if we bring that up and it fails, a cut in services. And I still think that the, both of the schools should be held of Proposition 2.5. So, if we could get that on the agenda, maybe for the next meeting.
I would be happy to do that.
And maybe, maybe we'll be discussing it at more than one meeting. Maybe we'll have to keep putting it on the agenda. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Mark?
I'm good.
Good. So, I mean, as Selectman Watson stated, I cannot weigh in on this in my role as a Board of Selectmen, because I'm an employee of the Woodya Regional School District. But I do think that the members of the board can ask to have things on the agenda, and I can just recuse myself, because I certainly don't want to stand in the way of townspeople getting information and important topics being discussed. Okay, so whether or not you hear from Chairman McDonald or not, feel free to put it on. Okay? Next on the agenda, oh, old and unfinished business, trash and recycling. We've had two meetings. I think they've gone really well. I won't say we've solved all the problems, but we've certainly come up with some really good topics. We are looking into the, you know, the waste disposal, contracts from other towns. Our town administrator has been instrumental in providing this trash recycling group with multiple copies of contracts, resources, composting information, everything and anything. And although we haven't made any serious decisions, I think we've learned more about the process of a request for a proposal versus a bid. A request would allow us more leeway. We wouldn't have to take the lowest cost. We could take something that reflects more what the community wants. We might want to go out to bid for multiple contracts for composting, recycling, and trash. We're just, we're looking at everything and anything that will help save money, because trash is going nowhere but up, up, up. So, that's my update. And any input from the board members, certainly welcome at any time, but when we get some thoughts more solidified, we'll be glad to bring information into here. Okay. We've had really good attendance, too, from the members that joined. I'm really grateful for their help and for our town administrator participating and supporting us so well. As far as the Board of Selectmen policies update, I've had absolutely no time to do anything since our last meeting, so put a hold on that. In the correspondence, we have a resignation of Dave Evans from the Groveland Fire Department. He's taken a job in Newbury, I believe, right? And we're going to miss Dave. He was an incredible addition, our first full-time officer on the Groveland Fire Department. We wish him well, and certainly if we have questions or anything, he's offered to help us at any time with their transition to a new person for that position. I thought that was really great. We have an invitation from Fire Chief Robert Valentine for a live burning training on November 18th and 19th down at Strawberry Fields. He says, if he knows you want to come by, he will guide you through it. I would assume we wouldn't have to go inside, right? No. Just look at it. Okay, so maybe I'd want to go down on Saturday to see it. That might be interesting. The regional agreement discussion is tomorrow night at Penn Tucket at 6:00 p.m. Anybody that can attend is welcome, I think, right? The public as well, right? Okay. And then, as Selectman Watson mentioned, we have a letter from Rowley concerning the Woodya Regional Vocational School Building Project. And last, we have a letter on Veterans' Day Ceremony on November 10th. It's at 10:30 a.m. in Central Fire Station. They've asked if a member of the board would speak. I know, Ed, in the past, you've taken on that responsibility.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll check with Dan if he's going. I'm sure he will.
Oh, if you, okay, I haven't heard from him, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'll plan on it.
Okay, thank you. So, and of course, the public's all welcome, and the Penn Tucket Band will be there and the chorus, and it's always a really great ceremony. It's about a half an hour, 40 minutes long, and I always like going to it. So, hope to see everybody there. Next on our agenda is an executive session. I know we have only three members, but we have a quorum. We could at least go into the executive session. Our plan is to go into executive session, I'll read the formal announcement in a second, but with our town administrator contract coming to an end, we wanted to begin deliberations, and we do not expect to go back into open session. We'll conclude our meeting after the executive session. So, thank you and good night. And now, I'll do, we're going to executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, that being our town administrator. And that's a motion. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Roll call. Ed Watson?
Yep.
Mark?
Yep.
Kathy, yes. Okay, so we are in executive session. Thank you so much.